Welcome again, everybody. Hopefully, we can all stay connected, fingers crossed. Is there anybody online that wishes to address the board in the public comments?
Make sure you mute your computer if you're going to stay on the phone.
I think it might be Sheila. Did you shut off your phone, Sheila? And you're because you're online now.
All right. Are we good? Are we good here?
I believe so.
All right, I'm hearing no public comments. We will next off, we have two votes for this evening. The first is to review and approve the meeting minutes. Those were sent an email. They were also available via the Board on Track.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. This is Jess.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second from Liz. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll take all votes will be roll call vote. Let me get my handy dandy checklist here. Roll.
You say, Raul, yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen? Is Kristen on?
Yes, trying to unmute. Yep.
Got it. Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes. We'll be doing them in that same order for any other votes we have, by the way. Just for people. So the next discussion item is the financial. I'll find the paper version of that here. The financial policy document. Kristen, would you like to introduce this?
So we created an investment policy to help manage and guide the finances of the business. We presented that the month before last in draft. Generally, what this does is just make sure that there's oversight around any changes that occur within the finances and the banking of the business. Has everyone had a chance to review the document submitted? Does anyone have any questions about that? Any comments or questions?
Kristen, it's Liz. The only question I had is how do you determine like what's what amount goes to operating and what amount would be left for investment? That was my only question when I was reading through it.
Sure, that's a great question, Liz. So the number one driver of how much money we keep in operating expenses is that we're supposed to have four to five months of cash flow available, right? That's part of the standard requirements. And in addition to that, the other item is to make sure that we have liquid capital as well and that we can access that that funding as necessary. So as an example, in the new investment account that we have with Boston Private Banking, we are utilizing a very liquid money market account and we can move funds out of that account as necessary during the year. So it's a very easy way for us to maintain both the liquidity and access to the funds as well as to increase the amount of income that we receive. But generally, the number one item that we want to have is liquidity to cover the operating assets, operating expenses every month that we would need or over the next three to five months per the guidelines. So that's generally how we do it.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Kristen, with Jess, I had a question as well. It may not be the best place for this question, but as I was reading it, there's a couple. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to have students connect with this. We're learning about these things. Sometimes we've had a business club on campus or sometimes we talk about investment in the econ classes. And I certainly don't want anything like the school needs permission from the kids or like gets advice from them. But I didn't know if there was a way that we could say something in there, like maybe this investment thing meets with the kids once a year to kind of show them or I don't know. I just I was like, oh, I wonder if this was an opportunity that's possible.
Um, so I'm not sure I heard the beginning of your question, but if it is in regards to having the business club get more visibility to the finances of the school or the way we invest our funds, I mean, this is a certainly happy to have conversations with them as a speaker and talk to them about that. And I'm sure Leanna would as well if she hasn't already. But the notion of an investment in terms of what the business club might be doing versus what this particular investment is doing in the policy is much more of a protocol, policy, and procedure and guideline versus, you know, and we're not really per se investing the money in anything other than a highly liquid, highly secure investment, which isn't really fun or exciting or interesting probably for what they would be doing.
Yeah, they probably like the stock market and stuff. I just I didn't know.
Yeah, but I think it's a great idea to encourage speakers to come in and talk to them about all kinds of investments. And so this is one, if you wanted to open it up, I'd be happy to do that with you.
All right, probably doesn't need to be in the plan, but just an idea that kind of as I was looking over it comes into my head.
Any other questions?
This is Sheila. One question I had is, do we need to enumerate in there anything about like what statutes give us or regulations give us to do that investment? I was just looking at some other policies and they seem to do that. And the kind of offbeat question I had is, are there any restrictions? What can be invested in? But we're not talking like a large Harvard endowment investment, but still.
My only restriction I think we have in the policy is to say that it is a high or I should say, I was going to say a high, highly secure, but a portfolio. But it's a good question, certainly on your former. We'll have to look at that and see if that's the case. Okay. So we may need to actually do research on that one before we can approve the policy because that one may require adjustment to the policy itself. Well done. Anybody else? Questions? Those are good questions. I really didn't think we'd get any questions, so. Thanks for everyone taking the time to dig in. No? So Roger, I do think that, you know, given Sheila's last question, we might want to take one more look at that and see if there isn't any requirement for us to notate in the policy. I don't have thoughts on that.
I'm thinking that, you know, given that we have no investment policy in hand, that we unless there's a glaring reason not to do so, I think we should approve this one and strive to improve on the next iteration of it.
I'm okay with that, too.
Board discussion?
Does that mean governance should look at it? Does that mean governance should look at it next meeting? If it's approved and then governance looks at it and then it's something because we're going to be potentially amending policies at the May board meeting. So it would be a quick turnaround.
Yeah, if you're, yeah, if we could, we I'm suggesting that we approve this one and then we could send it to governance for refinement and improvement, either next meeting or when you get to it.
Right, it's already on our agenda for the next governance meeting to do all the proposed revisions to policies.
Awesome, so you just the economy of scale and just get her done.
Yep, all right. I'm in agreement to them.
All right, I believe any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'd like to call a vote. I need a actually need a motion first.
Motion to approve the investment policy.
We have Cindy?
Yes.
Need a second?
I'll second it. It's Liz.
All right. Roll call vote, starting with Raul.
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. I believe that ends the voting portion of the meeting to the best of my understanding, at least for the moment. And given that, we all go to the executive director report. So take it away, Ellen.
Okay. The question is, can she get it to actually present the entire screen? Oh?
Did you want me to do it? Sarah sent it to me, Ellen, to put up. Did you want to do it or?
Cool, no, go ahead. Can you can you put it up like so it covers the whole screen?
I believe I can, yeah. One second. Oops.
Okay, I was going to try to do it from my end, but there you go.
Thanks on the review.
Yeah, I just looked at review, full screen, right? Full screen mode?
Yep.
Does that work?
We're a team. Thank you. Okay, all right, that's nifty. Oh, wow, this is this is better than last time, actually, with with you doing it because I can see people there still.
Yeah.
All right, terrific. All right, Ben, does this mean though that I can't control when I'm clicking through the slides?
No, yeah, that's correct. Yep. So you just tell me when and I can go to the next one.
Okay, um, can you please go to the next one?
Absolutely.
All right, well, welcome everyone to our board meeting here in April. Hard to believe that it's already the very, very end of April and tomorrow's May 1st. So that's amazing. All right, so tonight, just a quick overview of our, sorry, my phone's making noises here. Quick overview of the report tonight. We're going to talk about the remote learning recommendations from the Department of Education. We got some new updated recommendations on the 24th of April. The last time that we, this was is an updated version or kind of a boosted version from the March 26th recommendations. The like, I believe the last time we met it was March 24th. So those recommendations came out just a couple of days after that. I'll review those quickly and then we'll just talk about, there's a couple new parts to the to the most recent ones, April 24th. And we're going to talk very quickly about the next eight weeks and what is that going to look like? And then we're going to look ahead to the fall and what we're what we're thinking about and the different scenarios and how we're going to plan for that. And then we have actually some, I think, rather exciting razzle dazzle time to entertain you here at the end. So next one, please. All right, so we received on the 24th of April, we received a new document, 25 pages long, called Strengthening Our Remote Learning Experience. And this document starts with an overview of the initial guidance that was given to us on March 26th. And in that guidance, the state is very clear. And I think Governor Baker is clear when he speaks to us each day and our commissioner, their priorities are well in line. And that is that our priority is the safety and well being of all members of our community. That is our top priority. It is every day of the year, but it certainly is now that we're in the middle of this COVID situation. And we always want to keep that in mind with all the decisions that we make going forward. The other priority is to always continue to keep our kids engaged in academics and we're trying to prevent learning loss at this point. We are and have been since March 26th, starting to move our curriculum forward in a in a slow, measured, careful sort of way. We have been limited to teaching for about three to four hours a day. The recommendation was a half a school day. And so we've been doing about three or four hours a day, but that has to go across all classes. And so most of our teachers, we've staggered it. The AP teachers are have more time and then the everyday classes and then the electives, which are every other day classes, have had the least amount of time per week to try to reduce the amount of time that kids are on screens and also keeping flexibility in mind for our teachers who are often caring for younger children and spouses working at home and things like that. So we're trying to be very nimble and flexible in all the things that we do. We want to keep our kids engaged in academics. We want to help them to continue to feel very connected to their school community, to their teachers who mean so much to them. And I think now they realize just how much they mean to them every day. And they they've also talked many times about the fact that remote learning is not a replacement for school, right? And I will say, and I've said many times in the last X number of weeks, is that there is no replacement in my mind for an AMSA education. The saddest part about this whole situation is that the kids that deserve an AMSA education, our students, are not getting a full blown AMSA education because it cannot be delivered remotely. They also, you know, want us to be the state, the Department of Education wants us to be very careful about the screen time and how much time our our kids are online. We know they're online a lot, but as somebody, and I'm sure many of you who are spending six, 10, 12 hours a day looking at a screen, it can be, you know, a significant issue. But remote learning is also not the same as taking a class online. This is not the system that that we have at this at this point. It's not a college online system. It's a remote learning system, which means that it has a lot of different ways that that curriculum can be delivered. And it can be delivered with live sessions. It can be delivered through projects with office hours from teachers. It can be, it can be also packets that go out to to this to the students. So there's a number of ways that that it can be done and done well. We at the initially, this was, we were told that this was skill building and enrichment. That was the initial guidance that was given through the Department of Education. And they also recommended that we do a credit, no credit system, which we have adopted. Since the 26th of March, we initially started out with a very with the idea it would be enrichment and skill building, but as this has gone on week after week, we have started to move our curriculum forward, as I as I mentioned. And now it will continue to move, move forward at a at a at a deeper pace or quicker. I don't want to say quicker pace because we need to be careful of speed, but we, let's go to the next slide and that will help. All right, so the next phases of the remote learning, this was the guidance from April 24th, once again, 25 page document. They talked about strengthening remote learning programs for all students to make sure that all students have access and that we're able to to set up a tracking system to make sure that our students are attending, that we know what's going on with them and that if there's any kind of barrier for to for them to actually be in class when they need to be, that that we need to know that. We set up a tracking system actually right away and that went through the deans of students. It's also the our three receptionists are calling families at home, checking in on families, checking in on the students, finding out, you know, what kind of barriers there may be in the home. And and they're tracking all of that so that we can check in with students regularly. They're also checking because we find that some students may be showing up to to history and English, but they're not showing up to math. And so they're also cross checking to find out, is this student, have we just not heard from them at all? Or is it just that the math teacher is not hearing from them? And so the receptionists are working on that with the deans of students and Brianna Murphy is leading the way with that program. We will also, based on the recommendations, we are activating the DS teachers. And so the middle school DS teachers will, you know, will check in with the students at least once a week and run kind of little homeroom periods or little advisory periods, check in with the kids and see how everybody's doing. The Guidance Councils, and I'm going to show you a video in a minute, are running lunch bunches in the middle school and they they're running those every week and they've had great attendance with those. And so we're continuing to talk about community building and we we just want to try to, it's like, kind of feels sometimes like herding chickens, you know, you're kind of trying to bring everybody in and keep everyone together. DS stands for directed study. Sorry, Raul, the AMSA lingo, directed study and yeah. And and just to kind of keep everybody on board and and feeling like they're connected to the school. The other new part of this of these recommendations that we got from the Department of Education, they talked about content standards. And so they also gave us another document that talked about what they felt were the minimum standards to go on to the next, the next grade level. And they suggest suggesting that schools take a look at those to decide what we want to focus on for the remainder of the year, which is another seven weeks and a day, actually. So what we reviewed everything with the department chairs this this Monday. We have weekly meetings on Mondays and really determined that AMSA standards and our academic standards and and the the items and things that we focus on aren't necessarily aligned to the state. We know that. That's what makes us different from the state. So therefore, the department chairs will be working with the teachers, looking at the curriculum, and we will decide, they will decide what are the power standards that we want to focus on to have our students ready for the fall. And we know that there's a significant amount of work that's going to need to be done with our students to catch them up, to get everybody on the same page again on the fall, in the fall. But right now, we can take a look at and, you know, we've I've talked to Luba quite a bit about this, you know, what are the math standards? What's the minimum that these kids need to know? Go heading into the summer and then where will her classes pick up once the fall hits? So each department chair is going to be and is in the process of working with their teachers to decide what those power standards are for each one of their classes. And also, they, the Department of Education obviously wants to know that all supports are being provided. They've given additional guidance to special education directors and we are fully engaged in that work. Lynn Jarvis is doing a great job with her special ed team to to provide those services. And Kate Lee is also working with her ELL students, running ELL supports. And and our school counselors are also involved with their five or four students and making sure that that those their needs are being met. And overall, we want to continue to perfect our communication, to continue to communicate with families so that they feel that we're hearing them, that that we are supporting them. We've had one family forum a week or so, well, it was the Friday before vacation and we're going to be running those every other week so that we can reach out to parents and hear their concerns. In the email that's going out to families tonight, there's going to be two surveys in that, two links to surveys, one for students to find out how remote learning is going for them and the other is for parents to ask them some questions about how they feel the remote learning is going in their home and what additional support or suggestions do they have? So during these next seven weeks, we will definitely spend quite a bit of our time analyzing those survey results and make sure that that we are continuing to get better at this because as we know, this is a this is a new game for all of us. And we certainly are in a situation right now where everything is perfect, but it's 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 solid. It's solid right now and we just need to continue to keep it, keep it that way. All right, then, next one? Thank you. All right, so we're looking forward to plans for the fall. And this is something that we've been thinking and talking about for a long time. It was probably two or three or four weeks ago that it started, I started reading articles that suggested that, you know, next year could be significantly interrupted. And so what does what does that mean for us? And so, you know, we want to to plan well ahead and to to be ready to for any type of scenario that comes up. So we're putting together a collaborative planning committee and this will be finalized with the department chairs on Monday and then we'll be, they'll be rolling this out to their teachers during their department share, during their department meetings during the week. And so we're going to put together, it's going to be a fairly large committee and then it will likely be broken up into subcommittees and I will talk more about that on the next slide. But the committee will consist of, at the very least, and this is, you know, a work in progress, so certainly willing to take feedback. But each one of the department chairs will be involved in this committee, the directors, and by that I mean special education directors, school counseling director, director of accountability, director of operations, our deans of students, two teachers from each department. And this will be one teacher from the upper school, one teacher from the lower school. This will be volunteer. We will also be taking, I was talking to Scott Schere last night, we will be taking two science teachers, but also two computer science teachers because I think it's imperative that they're involved. And I will be also on the committee, Mike Noraki and Brianna Murphy. So that, when you add all that up, that's about 25 people or so. It's a good sized committee. So we're going to be breaking up into subcommittees. Ben, could I have you go to the next slide for me? Thank you. And eventually, we will be breaking up into these subcommittees that are going to be looking at different scenarios that we may be facing for next year. And we're going to create very detailed plans, right down to what other things that we should be looking at, how much will those cost? So we can have a plan in place between working on this through the spring and potentially summer work, too, so that we're ready for any scenario that comes up in the fall. So Plan A, it would it would be something like, we want to create a plan in the likelihood that we end up back at school, but with very strict social distancing requirements. And obviously, those social distancing requirements would be, you know, that would be state recommendations. And so we would take whatever Governor Baker tells us that we need to live in, I live within, and I know that Commissioner Riley will also be heavily involved in this. He's already started to talk about what that might look like. And and I know they're doing, they're spending a lot of time looking at different schools in Europe, in Italy, and what they've done in China and deciding if we go back to school in the fall and we have to return with very strict social distancing requirements, what does that look like? And there will be costs associated with that. And I imagine that there'll be a lot of recommendations coming down from the state, but we want to be prepared if that's the case. Plan B would be, you know, if we do not return to school at all or we return to school for a half a year. And I don't expect that we would really know this until perhaps the end of the summer. And that's why it's so important that we start planning now, just in case. We'd be looking at things like different types of, you know, learning platforms, academic platforms. Canvas is one that Padmaja has mentioned on a number of occasions. We will take a look at that and how it works. Number of colleges use that. And but this would be the scenario of, we're told we'll be out for the whole year or we'll be out, let's say, for the first semester. So very definitive dates. Plan C would be, you know, if if we were in school and out of school randomly. So we go back and then all of a sudden it pops up in November, we're home for a month and then we're back and then we're we're home for a month or two. Because each one of these scenarios brings with it very different challenges and maybe different ways that we schedule things. And so each one deserves a group of people really looking at it, I think, very intent intensely and making recommendations for how it would look and then obviously looking at what the cost of each could could potentially be. And then there may be a Plan D. There may be something else that someone says, oh, yeah, but you know, what about this? Let's take a look at it from this standpoint or this possibility. And as the Um, and as these weeks and months play out ahead, I think we're going to um, you know, see a number of things that are going to come up in the news or from the state um, or local and, and federal government that um, may give us other scenarios that we need to plan for.
Um.
Ellen.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to take the question now, but.
Sure, sure.
I know it's early in the planning process and you're just sharing that, that you're thinking in this direction. Which by the way, kudos for uh, staying ahead of a curve and thinking strategically and planning for scenarios. But I wonder if there has already been a discussion or to make sure that, that we keep that in mind. When I see social distancing requirements, I think of space. And we know we have a lot of space and facilities has been a challenge for us for a long time. So uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, what facilities requirement would this affect? And I guess we'll have to be creative on how to make better use of space if we're forced to um, apply any kind of separation that, that just, I just think physically would be really challenging in our school.
Well, this is certainly one of the biggest concerns that we all have. Because even if you, the, one of the scenarios that, that kind of plays out in my mind um, in the middle of the night sometimes is to run two sessions of school, right? You run a morning session, you run an afternoon session. Uh, the teachers teach their day twice, the classes are shortened or they're, they're every other day or, or some type of schedules worked out. Where instead of having 25 kids in a class, you have 12 in the morning and 13 in the afternoon. Um, the biggest issue I, I see with, well, there's a hundred issues, a hundred problems with that. Um, but one of the big ones that comes to mind is busing. You know, how do you get 10, if Marlboro High Schools, if Marlboro School District's doing something like that, then maybe they would run the buses twice a day. And yet now you're still putting students very close together on a bus. And even if it's half of them, I'm not sure how you monitor to make sure that they're, they're staying apart. Um, you know, we definitely have um, very interesting shaped rooms, especially in the lower school. Um, there's a number of rooms that, my gosh, if, if two kids stood arm to arm, they, they're almost going wall to wall. They're very long, narrow rooms. And um, I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure how that would work. But what I do know is that I've talked to a number of EDs from, from charter schools and we're all in the same situation. We all have big, huge challenges with our, with our buildings. And so when we start talking about, you know, running school in the fall, these, I mean, these are the things that our government officials are going to have to look at and make decisions on um, and how risky that is. Because I, I'm not sure how practical it is, but I do think it's something we need to look at. I know they're looking at um, overseas and what they're doing in there.
Actually Ellen, it's Liz. Um, I, I had a similar question to Raul that just sort of piggybacks on that. Is there any possibility where half the kids would come one day and half would come the next day? And maybe they participate via video on the day that they're not in school, something like that?
Sure, sure. That could be part of Plan A.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I'm just wondering with the, cause I, I, I mean, I think the whole social distancing and knowing what our facility challenges are, that's, you know.
Yeah.
A huge problem.
I, I will tell you though, that there's a major change to real estate and companies' use of space. So space options might be different than what we're thinking they are right now. Right? So um, just another, if you think about Plan D, there's question marks there. What, what if we subletted other unused space and started to look at, you know, stretching the school? But I don't go into all the different scenarios, but I just let you know that there are some major changes. Um, especially in my, where I, where I work, that people aren't even going to go back to the office in some cases. So, or we'll have the same modifications that we're doing.
Yeah, Ben, I definitely agree with you because I'm seeing it in, on the real estate side on construction where people now, they are questioning whether or not they need that extra 5,000 square feet or they're questioning whether or not uh, they should just work from home. So I think that this is, this has definitely changed the landscape. Um, I keep telling everybody that I feel like it's a combination of how it used to be and how it is now. And it'll never be the same. So I do agree with you on that.
Yeah. I agree with, I agree with you all. And, and this conversation, this type of conversation is going to be very, very important. Um, I know that, that when I pull together a group of teachers and administrators from our school, that they're all going to come and bring their best ideas to the table. And um, and I talked, you know, Roger and I were talking earlier, we had our pre-meeting. And, and we were talking about, you know, what kind of supports can the board bring um, to the school during this time? And it's your ideas. Because there's so many of you that are in different industries and you have different connections. And you see things from, from the business side and Nick, you know what's going on out there and Ben, the same thing. Those, that kind of input's going to be really valuable to us. It's what a board and advisory council's all about, um, is, is helping us navigate through this. Um, so it's going to be um, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work and um, we're looking forward to it. And, and getting all these uh, just, just different options out on the table um, with our, with our team. So um, we'll be.
If I may Ellen, I.
Yes.
Yes, I think the other thing that we really need to consider as an institution is, to be honest, I am going, I'm guessing that a lot of kids, that, you know, as this virus spreads, these kids are going to get it. They're going to recover quickly there and they're going to have these antibodies and whatever's going to happen. It's going to spread no matter what we do. And I think what we're really going to think, need to think about is how we take care of the people who are in our most vulnerable positions, which is going to be a lot of staff members and then kids who are medically compromised. It might not be the like bulk of our students. It might be, um, it might be adults. And those are, it's much more, you know, we have tools to help kids like private four plans and things like that. But, but helping grownups might be something as an institution, we need to think about how we're going to be able to do.
Yeah, real good point Jess.
Yep, absolutely. Um, because, I mean, that, that's been certainly on the top of our, our minds is, is, I mentioned earlier that um, you know, we have 15% of our staff that are, are 59 and above. Um, when I was, I was looking at some numbers, some data with my husband a week or so ago that actually showed that the mortality rate is highest in Massachusetts in the 50s. Now, why, why is that? I'm in my 50s and why is that? And, and I think in some cases it's that where we think we're um, we're not vulnerable, as vulnerable. So we're still going to work or we're going places um, because we're not 60 and above. And um, maybe have put ourselves at, at greater risk. And so when you start looking at AMSA staff, uh, 50 and above, you're starting to look at more like 30% of us. So um, definitely a huge concern Jess, thank you.
Well, and just another Marlboro stat for you, because I found this one interesting. But if you look at the number of people who have contracted, uh, contracted um, COVID-19 in Marlboro, the highest rate has been 30 to 39. So again, back to your point Ellen, is it because they feel like they aren't going to get it or aren't as vulnerable? I'm not sure, but I just thought that was interesting when I saw that this week.
Yeah. That could also be though, that, you know, look at the age of the healthcare workers. More than likely they're the younger people and they're the ones that are the, on the front line. So that could inflate our numbers, you know, across the board.
Yeah, I, I will tell all of you, all day long, Microsoft and all these companies are doing all this data analytics. And just like with any data, you can look at it from 5,000 different ways and come up with different conclusions. So I, I really think that it's going to be interesting that when enough data comes out and people can make real sense of it. Um, but yeah, all these reports are, are uh, definitely creating some buzz in terms of what, what could be, you know, who's vulnerable, who's not, and how to even address some of those things.
Yeah, I'm not even really sure how much we know, but I have been just time checked. Um, so I'm, I'm going to move really quickly here. Ben, can I have you click down there for me? So just to, to give you um, all a sense of that we are on this, um, that we are ready for this work, that we are AMSA and, and I know that we are going to be on top of this. Um, I have 100% complete confidence in um, my administrative team, uh, my department chairs and every teacher in our building. And so um, we're, we're, we're ready for it. Okay, Ben, we're going to click through some of these, so we're going to razzle dazzle you. Go ahead. Um, just to talk about, just a little bit, show you some things, that's how we're building community during COVID. Next one then. All right, here's our wonderful um, AMSA school counselors. Um, they certainly are the best and they've got little signs there that say, we miss you and hope to see you soon. Uh, those are all our counselors um, that are at the school. And our little intern is uh, holding that yellow U down on the very bottom. She's been terrific this year. Next one. Um, if you can cook on this, this is Jess LoShiavo. She's one of our lower school counselors. Gives you an idea of um, the, the work that our lower school counselors have been doing during lunch bunches. It's like a 40 second video. Is that going to work?
Can you still see my screen?
Um, yep, I can still see Jess, I can still see Ms. LoShiavo, yeah.
Video through the Google meets, both video and sound is very tricky and there's lots of um, patches out there and things. Um, it, it might not work if you haven't set it up ahead of time, so.
Okay, well, we won't waste time with it then. But I will tell you that, that the council's running these weekly lunch bunches. And that um, the kids are adorable on here. She asks, you know, is anyone in their uniform? And there were actually kids that showed up to lunch in the uniform. It, it's adorable. Hit the next one for us then. Okay, so this week we did a virtual spirit week. Some of you may be aware of this, but we wanted to big, a big shout out and thank you to our student government students and for Ms. Murphy for creating this fun and unifying activity. The NHS has also been involved in creating some fun things. Um, and so I'm sorry, but my little alarm just went off for some reason. Um, and so these are some of the um, the things they've done. Tropical Day and Dress Up Day, Celebrity Day was yesterday. Um, Groufit is they dress out like in a, they gray out, uh, wear all gray clothes. Uh, there's Jess in her gray. And then um, on Friday, it's Orange Day. So I've got some pictures. Um, then let's flip through these. These, this is one Tropical Day and one Dress Like a Celebrity Day. Next one. And the kids are sending these pictures in. So these are two from Tropical Day. These are kids from student government. Uh, these are two of our teachers is Maria and um, and Nicole. Uh, Nicole's a biology teacher down in the lower school and Maria is one of our language uh, teachers, being uh, tropical. Next one. Um, couple of our students, this is Dress Up Day. Um, I'd love to see Katie here with her dog dressed up in a little bow tie. And another one of our students um, dressed up part of student government. Next one. Um, here's, look at this. This is lovely Ms. Jess Bowen and this is Nicole. Um, and they are for part of Dress Up Day. Alrighty, next one. And this was a, a, a little thing that Ms. Murate did with her pre-calculus class. And so they've picked different themes each day. And this was a winter theme they did, they've done some others too. Um, and she took a, a picture or one of the kids took a picture of um, of the kids all dressed up. And um, and it was just fun, just something um, fun to do. Next one. You can see she has 22 kids in her class. Um, all right, so the seniors, you know, um, our hearts and soul have been with our seniors. And um, I had a great conversation today with um, their two class advisors. Um, coming up with some great ideas uh, to um, support and, and show our love and care for our seniors coming up. But um, the PTO, um, grateful to them and to the after prom committee for putting these signs together. And they went around and delivered them and took pictures of the kids. These are just a couple of, I, I wanted to show you. Uh, next Ben. And there's a couple more. Are they not adorable? All right, we've also had a ton of community service going on. Um, it, we were talking a little bit earlier about all the work that Mark Vital has been doing within the Marlboro community and surrounding communities. But this is some of the work that our kids have been doing. Um, Ben. All right, so we had um, one, let's see, this is where my, my notes here come in. But we had um, some kids go down to, this is, boop, boop. Um. All right, so we had one, one student, ninth grade student that went down and made um, hundreds of sandwiches and bagged sandwiches at the Nashua um, soup kitchen. And then in the other photo, uh, that's one of our students, uh, she's a 10th grader and her eighth grade brother. And they um, helped deliver three semi trucks full of donated candy and treats at Clinton High School. Um, and next one Ben. And then our student here in front of the truck, they were doing, this is, this gentleman is the co-president of our Red Cross Club on campus. And um, they helped with canned goods at the Worcester County Food Bank. And then this group of um, medical workers, this was a project done by one, our substitute manager Kathy Ward. Um, she sewed more masks, 300, 300 face masks. Um, and this was at the beginning of the crisis and um, delivered those to some of the medical professionals. Um, and they sent this, this photo of themselves. Um, so a lot of people thinking about um, helping and serving um, others in our community. I know we have a lot of our students who've been in touch saying that they're working um, as essential employees at Costco, grocery stores, um, Target, um, and some of those, um, those places too. And I, I have to say that in my opinion, those kids are, are heroes, right? Our, our kids, that they're out there on the front line with our medical professionals, our EMTs, our police officers, firemen, our teachers, who are on the front line every day trying to keep our, our community and our world together and keeping us all some sense of sanity and stability in our lives. Um, and that's what our teachers do for our kids every day. Um, we don't get to see them, administrators don't, don't get that chance. But our teachers are there and they're taking care of our kids every day. And I'm very, very grateful for the work that they do. And the last one is just a thank you to everyone. Um, we are continuing to soar. I have great confidence in our community. I have no doubt that we will come through this. Um, and, and you're right, different than we've ever been before. And we don't know what different is going to look like on the other end. Uh, but I do know that we're a very resilient, um, flexible group of people that, that is going to um, we're going to, we're going to do just fine for us. Thank you.
Hey Ellen, I have a quick question. So there, there was another initiative done by a friend of mine. Um, she actually lives in Florida now. But do, do we happen to have a lot of storage of like um, wipes at our school? That the, the teachers would use in their classes that we, that? They, they did a whole effort to donate those to uh, the local hospitals uh, in their school district? I was just curious if, if you know if we have a, 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 a lot of those? Or if that, if we're really just kind of a low on inventory?
No, we don't, we don't. Um, in, in fact, at the end, um, Eric bought, had to buy a lot of squirt bottles for the classrooms because he had gone through everything and. Um.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, I just was curious. I just saw that initiative, I thought that was kind of cool. And sometimes people sit on resources they don't realize they have. And if it was that situation, it'd be cool, but okay, it makes sense, thanks.
We ran out before school was over.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ellen, if I, I have a, a quick question and I don't know whether this is the place to do it or um, or whether uh, maybe I should just call you tomorrow or something. But two, uh, two people reached out to me about what we're doing for our seniors. The editor of the Community Advocate asked me to check with Marlboro, Asabet and AMSA to see if there's anything good going on that, that the schools are doing for the seniors. And you did mention a couple of things, so maybe that's where maybe you and I can chat tomorrow and I can get some more details. The other one was the general manager of the Apex Entertainment Center in Marlboro. Uh, Marcus called me the other day and asked if there was anything that uh, the Apex Entertainment could possibly plan with, and he mentioned, he called me because of Asabet. And then I said, well, we're talking about AMSA too then, aren't we? Because um, he said, you know, maybe when things open up, there might be some way to make a connection and do something special for a senior class. So I spoke to Mark Holick at AMSA, at Asabet, and then I figured I'd mention this tonight. Maybe I should just call you tomorrow and, or another day and we can chat or something and give you some.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, we do, we do have a lot of things in the works. We're going to be taking a lot of suggestions from the seniors next Wednesday when we have our senior forum. Um, Mike and Brianna and I will be meeting with the whole senior class and um, or anyone who comes and along with Lori and, and Rob Luskey, who are our senior advisors. Um, there's a, there's, there's a lot of ideas in the works, some of them are secret, top secret stuff. That will be hopefully.
So we can't put those in the paper?
No, nice surprises for the kids, I hope, I hope, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ellen?
Um, I was just going to mention that if you go to the um, slideshow in Board on Track, you can open up Ms. LoShiavo's um.
Video.
Whatever she did with the seventh goods, her video, yeah, yeah. So you can go to get that after the meeting, right in the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Jill.
I watched it on mute.
If you do that, I just want to point out, if you do look at Ms. LoShiavo's, I want to point out she's in my childhood bedroom because she bought my mother's house.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Small world, cool.
I, I just wanted to echo what Raul said though. Ellen, you're doing an amazing job. Like this is really amazing, like how you've come together. I, I, I think I mentioned an email to you, um, just the, the difference between my other child in a different district and, and what you've been. and and what you've been doing. So just wanted to say thanks and I doing a really amazing job, like getting us, you know, stable and and thinking about the future and and really um, you know, making sure AMSA is a is a great experience for the kids.
Thank you, Ben. It's it's a, it's a team effort, that's for sure. I I've uh been very fortunate with the people that I get to work with every day. So thank you.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know, this is Padmaja, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak at this moment, but uh
Please, I invited you to speak, Padmaja.
Thank you. Uh, we feel the same. We are, we are very, very fortunate to have Ellen lead us at this point. Like, you know, we have been really, really happy about how she's handling everything and how she's supporting all of us and taking care of us.
Thank you, Padmaja.
Um, yeah, I'd like to add my my two cents in here too. I'm really, Ellen, I really appreciate all the hard work you put in and the planning now that we're not just reacting, but really that you're taking the effort to create, you know, possibly four different alleys, four different directions we could be going next fall. And that you're thinking about all of them. And I I really applaud you for your planning to put that together. And so
Thank you.
And I'll appeal to the board and any and anybody in the audience to, if you have ideas to assist AMSA, please email them to Ellen and copy myself. And we will get through this together.
We will. We will. Of that, I am, I am sure. Every time I get stressed out about something, I just say, no, we've got this. We've, we've got the right people and um and and AMSA will persevere again.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Last chant, last call for questions? And you know, if you think of things later on, either you could put them in the chat if it's immediate, or I encourage you to email Ellen directly with any questions that you have. With that, I'd like to transfer to Jess with the teacher representative report.
Alright, let me, let me unmute myself. Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, hi, everyone. Um, I have a few things to add. So um, I've mentioned this before, but before I um have a board meeting, I try and send out an email to all the staff asking for feedback. I give them first my personal email in case they're uncomfortable using school email. Um, and I have an anonymous feedback form that is always live and I always send the link out to that. So I have a few um updates from people who sent me specific things and also some things that are anonymous. Some of it is repetitive of what Ellen has already said, but I I I'm gonna say it anyways because I think it's important that you as a board know that this is not just coming from one source, but it's coming from from teachers as well. So um, I did hear from Kate Driver, who is the head of our counseling department, and she wanted you to all know that the counseling department is up and running. They're doing remote checks with students um through phone and video. They are providing counseling for people who were previously seeing counselors. They're putting out a wellness newsletter. Um, this has been stressful for the mental health of a lot of our um students. So counseling is uh on that and uh Kate is um and her people are, Ellen pointed out some of those things already. They're having those weekly um lunch groups and um for the middle schoolers and the high schoolers have weekly um lessons, novants. So um that is happening there. Um, and I believe, I'm, I'm not sure if the board gets those emails that have that wellness letter. I think it goes up out with Mike and Go's um update. So hopefully you you get those. Um, and then I wanted to read this um thing that I got in the, in the anonymous feedback. I want to read it exactly the way the teacher sent it to me. Um, here we go. They probably do already know this, but I want to make sure everyone's aware that while some learning is definitely taking place, these remote lessons we're doing are nowhere close to being a substitute for the face-to-face sessions, and we'd be kidding ourselves if we moved forward under that impression. Even if the time on task were the same as usual, and it's not, and I'm glad of that, this term would have dramatically lower learning gains than we're used to. So I think we kind of all know that. Um, and I just, I I want you to know that teachers feel that and and know that. Uh, we hold ourselves to high standards as teachers, as students, as an institution. Um, and this, what we're doing is a, is a stopgap measure. We're, we're, we're doing the best that we can um in emergency circumstances. And um, I think that they're doing a fabulous job at doing that, but we just don't want to ever lose the, lose sight of the fact that this is sort of a poor substitute for what we really love to do, what we're good at doing, and what we're capable of accomplishing. Um, I'm gonna make an econ teacher um analogy. We talk about a production possibilities curve and in sort of reaching the maximum amount of producing, and we're producing way inside our production possibilities curve with this remote learning. So um, I I don't think that that the teachers said that, um, and they're anonymous, so I don't even know who it is. But I don't think they're saying that in a, in a sort of negative way that this is bad. I think that they're just trying to make sure that the board is aware that whatever we use as metrics coming out of this, that we sort of know that this is not our normal and that it's important that, I I think also there'll be ripples from this. Um, you know, these kids are missing key pieces of of learning and will, will feel those gaps for a long time. This won't, this won't just be these few months that we're sort of holed up in our little, our little holes. So um, I also asked the faculty to give me um what I call onions and orchids, which might be a term that only is used at summer camp, but onions and orchids means like what's lovely in your life and what's stinky in your life. So here's some of the onions and orchids that people sent me. Um, orchid, overall, I feel the AMSA community has very, been very supportive of each other and consistently I've heard from my students that they feel like the pass-fail grading system we've implemented is while not ideal, basically the right way to handle the situation we're in. Um, that they're, the laid-back pace of the work is um making them happier and healthier. Um, an orchid to Ellen's leadership in this time guided by both compassion and realism has been inspiring. So I think we were all just saying that a minute ago, so. Um, an orchid to um reassessing content, really this sort of gives us all as teachers an opportunity to sort of reassess what's absolutely essential and what isn't. And I think that's sort of always a healthy process when you have to kind of go through and cull down to the most essential thing, that there can be um some value in that process. So I appreciated that one. And then, what's stinky? Like a lot of people, I'm worried about how we'll handle this interruption in the regular educational sequence like year, uh, in the sequence next year. What does it look like when three-fourths of our classrooms will have students missing what we normally consider prerequisite knowledge? Um, I take some solace that this is a global problem, which we don't need to solve on our own, but it's still a worry. So I think that goes back to the, what the other person said, that, you know, this is, this is going to have some, some ripple effect. I think one of the things that um, as both an institution and as a big, large nation, we need to consider that the people that this is going to affect the most and the greatest are going to be the ones that were the most vulnerable in the first place. And the people who have the least access to um, to, to educational resources. So that's gonna be something that we, that we deal with for, for a long time. Um, the other thing that teachers sort of have reached out about is sort of this, this off, this online learning has been difficult and balancing. So trying to find the right balance between, um, Ellen mentioned we're going to a pass-fail system, um, the, but it's the fourth quarter will still be equally weighted with all of the other three quarters and a report card. So um, there are some teachers who have been pushing for um a system which waits this fourth quarter less, and other teachers who have said, we don't really want to do that because it will disincentivize kids to put forth anything. So I think that there's, um, right, if we, so there's some people that say, well, we shouldn't count it that much because number one, we don't have as much time with them, there's not as much learning. So weighting that less is is a reasonable thing to do. And other people saying um that if we do that, then kids will say, oh, this is only worth, you know, and I'm not gonna do any of it at all. So there's a real sort of striking a balance between finding what's, what's fair, what's compassionate, what's gonna incentivize people, or what's gonna incentivize our students in the way that gets the most amount of learning, um, without creating a situation where we're putting, we want to put the right amount of pressure, but not so much pressure that kids are feeling um unhealthily, is that a word? Um, stressed out or, um, and of course, we don't have ways to monitor them every day. So what's um a right amount of pressure for some kid is not the right amount of pressure for another kid. And these are really, really tricky things to to balance with incentives. Um, and and teachers are are dealing with that. Um, we have had um faculty meetings online to try and kind of help talk to these issues and in our departments. Um, and hopefully we're finding the right balance, but um we won't have a plan that makes everybody happy, that I can tell you. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention in my faculty report, and I'm gonna put a little link in the chat, and I can send this out later through email if, if you want. But um, if you're wondering how students are doing, um, the AMSA newspaper has had updates, and that's done by Steve's Journalism Class. They have had um a few um page, they, they're still publishing online through their Journalism Class. And you can go and read stories. There's been a couple of uh recent stories about how this affects seniors and what online learning is like and how it's at AMSA. And um, sort of nice uh feedback from, from students who haven't had a chance to um to see that, or if you didn't know that was happening, uh, that's a nice little uh window into what um, what's, what's going on. So uh, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Jess?
I don't know if this is a question for Jess, or maybe it has to do with with the stuff Ellen talked about earlier. Um, is there any data, and I know the receptionists and going through attendance and whatnot, was there anything that's given us an idea of how much access has been an issue? And when I say access, I mean, not every student might have a laptop at home or connectivity and and the resources they need to do the online stuff.
Um, I know that, um, Ellen, you might be better at this, but your mouth is full, so I'll try and take until you can. Um, that we have set that up, that um, parents can um come to school and get Chromebooks for kids. Um, my neighbor has like three kids, I think, at AMSA, and they only had one laptop, so they were able to kind of come and get an extra Chromebook. So um, I think I heard that that, I think we've given out, did I hear twenty-five Chromebooks?
Perhaps about seventy-five.
Wow, seventy-five. Um, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the questions that they, when the receptionists call home, um, that's one of the questions that they're asking is that there've been technology um issues. From what I'm understanding, as of a couple days ago, when I checked in on it, we don't have any student that we haven't seen at all. Um, which is, I will say, is unusual. The other uh school leaders that I've, excuse me, spoken to, there's always conversations happening about what are you doing about the kids you can't find? And and so we're, we're very lucky, actually, very fortunate in our community that we've, if, even if there's something going on in the family, we've been able to reach somebody at home, or they've been proactive and reached out to us. Maybe not every student is going to every class, but at least if Jess hasn't seen them, you know, maybe Anders has. So that way, and we're cross-referencing that way to find out, to make sure. Um, you know, we, I think one of the recommendations that was in the document that the Department of Education gave out was, it's really helpful when you can, when you, they can uh record their lessons and then post them for the kids to watch it another time. It's more convenient, especially for our kids who are working. Um, so that's why this remote learning is happening in all kinds of different ways. Podcasts are being posted, video, um, slides, all kinds of things in different ways.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions for Jess? Thank you, Jess, for all, all your reports and collecting the feedback from any other teachers. I'd like to move on to Maura for the parent report.
I don't have much of anything. Um, I did post it on Facebook too, because the email has been very, very quiet. Um, but I don't have anything to speak of. I mean, random conversations. I think the overall piece is at least what I've heard kind of socially on my, my Zoom happy hours. Um, parents are, are pretty impressed with kind of what's going on. I think there's, everybody's, every kid is different and finding sort of their ebb and flow with kind of the, the input. Um, I know that on Sunday night, kind of coming, they had the Sunday scaries for the first time in a long time, coming back from break. And um, it was because they've got like the Classroom App, the Google Classroom App, and then email. And so it was like, even my phone lit up Sunday with all of the things that were gonna happen this week and all of the assignments. And I think getting it all at once is an adjustment for, you know, my kids are, you know, both totally different in the way they learn and and kind of organize. But there was definitely like a, oh, um, but I mean, I think, yeah, yeah, totally, Jess. Um, but, so, I mean, I think all in all, it's been an amazing experience comparing it with other schools, both here and mass in Marlboro and and other states is, it's eye-opening. I mean, our kids, I love listening to, when I'm not on a call for work, listening to their classes and kind of popping in and seeing, you know, who's doing what and and what the learning exercises are. And those grade seven lunches are awesome. Like, hearing the laughter there is like, oh, thank God, they're smiling. It's really refreshing. So I don't have anything sort of official from parents. Um, but if I get anything between meetings, I'll be sure to share as well.
I'll just jump in here and say, we really, we, we got some feedback at the beginning. Um, there was one email that went out that I think that was like, woo! It was, it was around the end of March. Um, but things have been very, very quiet on the parent front. People seem to be very happy and they were very supportive. The, the family forum, we did, about eighty-two folks that showed up, very, very supportive. People were, seemed happy. What's always a challenge for AMSA is communication and organization, right? Where to find all those assignments? Um, the once a week sending out the bulk, that was a recommendation from the state. We've been doing that since the beginning. Um, but that way the kids can kind of organize their time through the week.
Uh, any other questions or comments for Maura? Thank you, Maura. Uh, with that, I'd like to go to uh Chair Business. For, for Chair Business, I have three, three items I would like to talk about. Um, first, the first item, which I'll, I'll, we'll talk about is the survey discussion. Uh, this will be led by the Survey Task Force, starting with Raul. Second, I'd like to discuss what level of communication that we as a board want to do between meetings. Uh, initially started by posting one email, but then I had promised to do things weekly, but that fell by the wayside. So interested in a board discussion on how we should communicate between meetings. And third, I'd like, I'm going to work out of, we'd like to work as a board to appoint an ED Evaluation Task Force, which is something we do every um April at this point in time. So those are three, three Chair Business items. I'd like to just point to ask Raul to take the floor to lead the discussion regarding whether or not we should do, whether and how we should do a survey in the spring twenty-twenty timeframe.
Roger, before we start that, um, I don't see the um communication thing on the agenda. So how much time did you want for that, just so I can keep it?
Um, I'll take ten minutes, please.
So I, I'm unsure if the survey discussion will be a longer or a short one, totally up to you guys. If you remember last time we met, we said, hey, it's about time for us to be kicking off the survey because our original timelines was for the spring survey to happen after the April break, which would have meant basically last week, I don't know, or this week. Um, which obviously we decided we were not gonna do. And then we said, let's reconvene in the next board meeting to figure out, uh, first of all, to see how this situation progressed with quarantine, but also um how, how we think the change in timing would impact the survey. Uh, frankly, the task force didn't meet since that meeting. So there's, there's been no discussion about this topic outside of what we discussed in the board meeting. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's completely up to us. So um, the only thing I would say for reference is the timing, right? That the, we wanted to make sure that we, for the spring survey particularly, we were consistent as much as we can with the questions, the timing and whatnot, so we can compare year to year. So that this year, so we, obviously will be an exemption, uh, whether or not we do the, the, the survey. Uh, and the timing, like I said, would have been, we're already past that time, right? Uh, it doesn't take, I think, if, if we agree on keeping the questions uh stable, which is what we intended the, the spring survey to be, uh, we could uh have it up and running. And I'm, I'm saying this without having talked to Panorama and the people that we usually use to, to put this together, but I think the, the shortest timeframe that we could actually get the survey up and running would be um three to five weeks, right? So we're still, uh, even if we decide today that we're gonna do it with the same questions we have and we don't spend any time. and we don't spend any time coming up with new questions or discussing anything, uh, we still need to put the data together, we still need to ask them to put it up, and, and it takes some time to do that. So I'm just saying that as input for the discussion, which is, do we still have the spring survey, or we can call it whatever we want, even if it's not in the spring, uh, within the school year, knowing that it will be definitely an outlier? Uh, and, and if not, what are the alternatives? You know, completely skip it and then go back to the fall with our fall survey, or do it the same kind of survey in the, in the, in the fall? So, I, I don't even want to throw more options out there and just open it up for how people feel about it, and, and keep in mind how we use the survey, you know, what's the purpose of it, and how we use it uh, for guidance and benchmarking over progress.
Yeah, this is Liz. I mean, I, I'm kind of of the opinion that maybe we scrap it for the spring um, just because of everything that's going on. We're sending out a family survey right now, just to see how things are going with remote learning. And I'm just, I'm just wondering about how engaged parents would be, given everything else that's going on, to, to complete the normal survey.
I'm also wondering if any information that we did get from a survey, it won't help us plan? It won't help us, it, it, it won't be useful for us really going, maybe it will, I don't know. This is a question we should ask. These circumstances are so unusual that um, what would be the purpose of this, of the, of this data? It, it, can it, can we use it to guide us going forward? I'm not sure how much value that has, since we have no idea how long this will last and, and if this is even a reflection of what we do. I don't know, it, it raises a lot of questions like that.
Yeah.
I agree. I think there's so many unknowns, but I don't know how productive it would be.
No, it's Cindy. I, I agree too. I think at this point in time, the parents are dealing with an awful lot. And just a survey to give us information that we may not even be able to put to good use, because as you said, Raul, it is going to be an outlier. I think maybe um, this is not the time to, to put that one out there.
Yeah, and is there cost associated with it too? Um, to, to run the survey, to analyze a survey, and all of that? So, is it worth the cost? It's not tremendous, but it's still a cost.
Yeah, I'm looking at the questions from the spring survey, and most of them just aren't relevant considering what's going on right now. I mean, the school fit, and, you know, I don't know. Did, did, Liz, did you say you were going to do a remote learning survey independent? Of anything else?
Oh, stay tuned, we're going over it. I, we have the results, so.
No, I think that's a much better um, time spent on a survey, definitely.
Yeah, this, this was specific to the teachers, so we got a bunch of feedback from the teachers that we kind of have in four quadrants, but yeah, we'll, uh, we'll go over that in a few minutes.
Right. Joe, we did, the school did, it, it's going out tonight. Um, there's a, a short parent survey, and, and a survey to the kids on how they feel remote learning is going.
I think that's the most useful survey that we could ask for right now, so I agree too.
Yeah, so it kind of sounds like, you know, we're all leaning towards skipping spring. Uh, the only comment I guess I, I can think of is, it sounds like you're answering and thinking from the family survey perspective, and when we say the survey, we actually need two surveys, right? So um, I, I do want to make the point that, as, as much as, yes, there is the purpose of comparing it and use it as an analytics tool to plan for the future and changes that we might want to do, there's also the purpose of- Making sure people have a channel to communicate how they feel about the school. So as long as we feel that those channels are there, or the staff as well, and that doesn't necessarily mean doing another survey, but you know, they, we know we have the, you know, the, the teacher representative and the staff representative. We know we have ways for people to communicate with the board, but um, just want to make sure that whoever was, I, I don't know, I feel kind of silly saying this, but if anybody was waiting for the survey to say something that they really feel strongly about, that at least they find a way to communicate.
Yeah, that's a good point, and maybe the staff survey is different.
Yeah, maybe what we do, um, and Jess, maybe you have some insight into this, but if we send out an email that just says, you know, our plan is to put a hole on the staff survey for this year, but if you do want to provide feedback to the board, maybe we just set up a, an anonymous way for them to funnel feedback if, if there is something that they would like to, the board to know.
Or run the staff one, but not the parent one.
Yeah, let's, I'd like to um, split the decision in two to have a separate discussion. It appears, I'm hearing consensus that we should not do the parent survey. Uh, but I think we, I'd like to have a separate discussion. Give, if we give, if we take that assumption, and, you know, we can figure out how to react to, because we don't have a parent survey, we should at least, uh, suggest communicating out to our parents that we are not doing a survey this year for this reason, and then, and then move the discussion to whether or not we should do a staff survey.
I, I think the staff survey could actually have value. I think that there's, it's sort of a different, um, it's a different animal. And um, I, I think that that is one of the, it's, it's not the same as people coming to me. I think it's more universal, everyone's welcome to come to me, but I don't think that that does happen as much as the survey. Um, and I think that, um, I, I, I would be in favor of doing a staff survey, actually. I'm glad we're considering this separately.
Uh, any, any objections to, any, anybody want to take the opposite side of that argument to say that we should not do a staff survey?
All right, so I'm going to give myself an action item. I'm going to draft a, the, the text of the communication to go out to families explaining our decision to skip the, the survey. And, and I'll, I'll run that by the Survey Task Force, and then we can share with the broader board. And um, I, I guess this is related to your comment, Roger, about how we communicate as a board in between meetings, because I, I would assume it would be okay to do that um, with this particular purpose. And then um, reach out to Lynn and Panorama to set up the staff. And I won't come into any timelines right now without talking to them, but try to stay as, as close as possible to our original timeline, right? So, I guess that means doing it as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Am I on that task force? I thought I was going to, but I don't see my name here. I'm afraid to ask.
So, what was the question?
Repeat the question, Jess.
Um, am I on the Survey Task Force? I thought at the last meeting, Roger, you put me on there, but maybe, maybe it's, maybe that's not true.
I don't think you were, but you're welcome to join us.
Actually, I think she was.
She was she? Okay.
Yeah, we, actually, we were in the building. So it wasn't, it wasn't March, it must have been February. And I thought Roger kind of did it right there and then, right?
Yeah.
She volunteered.
I mean, you haven't missed anything, because we haven't met, but I'll include you in, in that email.
Okay.
All right. So it sounds like we have a plan of action that we're going to do the teacher survey um, quickly. We're going to communicate out to the parents that we are not doing a, the standard parent survey this year. Is that, and that the task force is going to lead that action to get it done.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Excellent. Any other discussion about that? Sorry, that's my phone digging in the background. Uh, okay, hearing no discussion, we are um, going on to uh, uh, communication within the board as to how, particularly this is primarily for the non, uh, for, for board members who are not parents, but it would apply to both, is to how, how should we communicate, what information would you like shared between board meetings? Yeah, I, I started by committing to doing a weekly, just basically taking Ellen's uh, report and adding, adding the meeting minutes and anything I thought was relevant and sending it out to all board members. And then I, then I failed to do that over vacation that hadn't, haven't resumed. So, looking for feedback on what we should be doing is regarding in-between meeting communication.
Well, what do we normally do in-between meetings? Even though when, when we meet in public, you know, when we meet at the school, what do, what are we missing that we're not doing now that we normally do in-between meetings?
Do all board members get Mike Finkel's weekly update?
I don't know if I get a Mike Finkel weekly update. I do get the Wednesday um, Guidance Department's newsletter. I don't see anything from Mike, but that would be helpful.
So Mike Finkel isn't sending out newsletters right now? Um, he's doing everything through social media, and then Mike, Brianna and I, I send, we send out a weekly email to everyone in the community on Thursday nights, just came out, actually. But my email, it was very redundant between the two.
Does that in communication go out to the board members as well, or is it just to parents?
I would think, I, um, I can check that with Mr., with, with, um, Mike Finkel sends it out for us.
I don't get one from Mike.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't say that it was from Mike, it would um, it would be, I just noticed, it just came out. It, it says, it comes out from the Advanced Math and Science Academy. The subject um, is uh, Updates from Amso Administration.
Nope, I don't get that.
Okay, all right, I'll ask him to send those out.
That would be helpful. That would be good, yeah.
I think some of you who are parents get them. Yeah, Mike, I just saw it. Okay, Mike Noraki is going to ask Mike Finkel to do that.
Great.
Awesome, thank you. The email that he sends out is really nice. It has um, some like nice sort of um, summary of all the little emails that went out. So that, that should go out to board members too.
Which one, Jess?
The one that Mike normally sends out, and it's like in color, and it's an email, and it will have like little, um, you know, if you send out a video, there'll be like a little link to it.
He hasn't been doing that since we, since we left.
Right, but I'm saying that when we get back, that would be a good thing for board, the board members to get, if they don't.
They do get those.
Okay.
Yeah, because I know we've asked, we've asked Mike Finkel to send those to them for a while, yeah, they get those. Um, there was just so much overlap um, between what we were sending out and what he was sending out, and especially at the beginning, he wasn't getting a lot of pictures and video. Um, so he's still kind of working on getting that communication up and running. It's, it was so much easier, he had so much more content when he was running around the building, videotaping everything, right? So.
Yeah, all right. Um, the other thing, other thing for the board is I'd really like us, you know, we're sort of in the point of leveraging or adopting more Board on Track, so I'd like to, we're, we're sort of bridging it right now that we did both, like the minutes went out, both an email form and we're posted on Board on Track, but I'd really like to make Board on Track our one go-to place for all the minutes, documents, everything for the meeting. So you just, as board members, you go to Board on Track, and that's where you look to find information. And it's also, that's the place where you will RSVP to the meetings or not. So I would encourage us to do that. Other thoughts on communication beyond those two items?
Roger, I don't know if this was the intention of what you wanted to discuss, but um, the, the emails that we just talked about are just general updates about the schools, so not necessarily board business. Is there, and I don't know how things have changed, I, I can't say I'm, I'm very familiar with how open meeting law changed uh, because of the um, isolation, but is, is there anything we should or could be doing? So for example, what I just brought up, if, if I put together a draft email to be sent out to parents for the survey, is that okay to send to the whole board for discussion to say, okay, we're good to sending this out? Or is that a violation of?
That, that would, um, sending it out for feedback would be a, uh, would be, would be not in the spirit of the open meeting law.
Okay.
Sending it out as a, as a communication would, would be okay. But if you're seeking feedback.
Sorry, go ahead. As you can use the word deliberation, you can't do anything that would be considered deliberation. And so you can't ask people to express their opinion. So if your email has an attachment, um, you just have to be careful what you ask the board members to do with it, because they're not supposed to discuss their opinion. They're not supposed to deliberate. Um, even with the um, governor's order, that really has to do with the open meeting public, you know, being able to participate in meetings. But with regard to email, that still has to stay the same. You're not allowed to deliberate via email. So you just have to be careful what you ask people to do, because even an attachment can be considered deliberation, it depends on, you know, what you do with it.
Okay, no, I think that clarifies. So I, I guess there should be nothing else going on, a communication going on within the board in between board meetings.
Right, in general, you just ask people not to reply with their opinion. It's an FYI. Anytime you need to make a decision. Well, this is also, well, is the, this is a task force question too, though, because you're talking about-
Right, and, and yeah, and maybe this is not a good example. I mean, well, the task force can work on delivery within the task force, because we're not a quorum.
You're not making a decision.
And we're not voting on something, right? So we'll put the email together, and the rest of the board better like it, because we're not going to-
Yeah. Yeah, so the task force can discuss that via email, but then the board-
Right. And just to be clear, and, yeah, and I don't want to get too hung up in my particular example, but you know, we'll put the email, then we'll send it to Ellen and Lynn and Mike Finkel, and they can further change it if they want, because it's not a board communication particularly. We're just trying to help with putting the content together, so.
Right.
All right, that's clear.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, we're good.
All right. I think we are, any, oh, uh, third piece of Chair Business. I'm looking for volunteers to be on, on the Evaluation Task Force for Ellen for this year.
Roger, it's Liz. I'm happy to help.
All right. I'd like to appoint Liz, Raul, and myself, or I am appointing Liz, Raul, and myself as the evaluators for the, for Ellen this year. And I'd leave, I'd like, Liz, if you'd like to take the lead role among the three of us?
Uh, sure, that's fine.
All right, thank you very much. Other volunteers? I know I cut it off quickly there, but.
I'm pretty sure I'm not allowed.
That would be correct. All right. That, that ends Chair Business. I'd like to move to Development Committee Report. Ben?
Uh, yeah, there's no report. There's a meeting uh, next Thursday for, um, for Development Committee, so we'll have one for next time.
Look forward to that. Jill, Governance?
And I will make up time here, because I don't need the 15 any longer. Um, so at Governance, we went through the bylaws and current policies, and it turns out that we are not going to be able to vote on any bylaw changes this month. We're going to save those until next month. Um, Sarah was very helpful. She got the process streamlined, and um, we're going to have to do a few more updates to the bylaws, um, but nothing substantial. So we'll have those for the May meeting, for the board to review and um, comment on. And then the same with the policies. And then, um, like I mentioned, with the investment policy, there's just a couple tweaks to a few of the policies, just to sort of update them to the current times that we will have. Um, one action item for the board is I'm going to need everybody to do the board self-assessment, which um, I guess you're going to assess yourself. This is the fiscal year 1920 Board Assessment. Um, so I will send everybody an email, um, which will give you a link to go to the assessment. And I'm going to ask that everybody gets it done by May 15th. And um, then we'll just go over it at the next board meeting. Um, it's really straightforward. If anyone has any questions, though, just, um, just reach out to me. Because you have to, if you can't link through my email, you'll have to go and- If anyone has any questions, though, just, um, just reach out to me because you have to, if you can't link through my email, you'll have to go into Board on Track. But then even in Board on Track, it's along the side, under the dashboard, if there's an assessments piece, so you could, um, get into it there. And then. I will have, okay, so we didn't have the ideal candidate profile attached to the packet. I did end up emailing it to you all while we were doing the meeting and we'll have, we'll make sure it's in the packet next time. But, um, this is the like document that we'll post on the website. And it's sort of the ideal trustee, Board of Trustee candidate that we're looking for, um, next year. We're going to, you know, push it into the 19, or the 2021 year. Um, so the plan is to post it on the website and then Salmini had some great ideas about, um, using our LinkedIn profiles and getting it out that way. So between Salmini and Mike Finkel, we might find some other ways to get the word out there of what we consider as the ideal candidate. But I'd like the the board to review the actual criteria that, you know, we're putting out there for next year. So that we will have to vote on in the May meeting. And speaking of Salmini, we, um, I just sent out a request for people to interview. So Salmini is, uh, looking to be a full board member, member. And so when she gets through the, um, interviews, um, Sarah can help put her packet together for disapproval. But that's very exciting that we have Salmini potentially joining the board. So that's all we have for Governance.
Uh, Jill, a question for you. Did you, did you look at the, uh, final tweaks, final edits on the vision statement?
Whoa, I thought we had a vision statement task force. Don't we?
I thought.
I thought the vision statement was done.
Well, there, there was one final edit that got proposed. Uh, it was mostly grammatical. And we needed, I thought that went to Governance to come, come back and make a final decision on.
I thought at that February meeting, we just, we voted to do it.
Uh, Roger, this is Pamaja. Uh, we did finalize that and it was all set. If I remember it with a likeness, Salmini and I edited it and I forwarded that to everybody else. It's all set as far as I can tell.
I believe, yeah, the, the challenge was there was a couple edits that were proposed after we did the final vote. And so we need to bring it back and vote again, although it is.
I thought, I thought Sarah had said that she did get those two final edits in there on the, the copy that went out when we went to that all staff meeting that day. I believe, because it was just a tense issue. There was a problem in the last part of it with the tense changing. Um, and Salmini had come up with a, a new plan and we sent it out. Okay, and I think Sarah said she got it in there.
Well, the, my point I'm trying to make is that those edits were done after the board meeting and thus we need to bring it back and vote one more and approve the edits.
I think that was, that definitely wasn't Governance. Um, so.
Um, I, I'll, I'll take it offline and find it in either bring it back to the board meeting directly or, or through Governance. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
I will take that action item. Thank you. Uh, any other governance questions? Thank you, the Governance Committee for all the hard work in reviewing the policies and bylaws. Uh, next up, I have Finance Committee, Kristen.
Coming back online, can you hear me? Uh, so Finance Committee been on Tuesday. We went over the financials for March. That was our primary objective this month. Um, just a heads up on the budget due to all the uncertainty and everything that's going on, we're, we're delaying the release of the budget. Normally we would be reviewing it now, um, but given we don't know what the state of affairs will be for next year, it's a little difficult to plan a budget. So, uh, as that comes up, we will revise what we have. Um, Leanna and Ellen have done an excellent job preparing that right now anyway. And so from a draft perspective, they're ready and waiting for, uh, the next stage of that process. The financials equally are going through a state of flux and unusual change as you would expect. Um, tuition, as we know, had taken a hit as a result of the budgetary changes, uh, year to date. We talked about that last month. That stays on track with the reduction versus budget in our tuition. Uh, pretty much all other streams of revenue are down for the month of March, uh, primarily as a result of the stay at home rules. Uh, for example, food service is down because we're not charging for meals. Um, student programs are off, athletic programs are off, we're canceled the spring season. As you would expect for sports, so there's no income associated with those. So for the month of, um, March, we were down $135,000 in income. Most of that is offset in expenses associated with the same programs. So you would think that that might be a problem, but in essence, it's actually not a problem as a result of those reductions in costs. In March, we did have one unusual cost item. Uh, I thought we had mentioned this last month, but there was some CAM true ups from last year. That needed to be repaid. That happened in March. It was about $90,000, uh, sorry, $80,000. And that has certainly increased the expense reductions, or I should say offset the expense reductions that we had anticipated. So the expenses were not nearly as, uh, low as the offset against income. But in total, the surplus on a year to date basis is favorable to plan as a result of those cost savings. Um, the year to date. Numbers are, as I had said, income, let me just go through the totals. Income is down $200,000. Expenses year to date are down about half a million dollars. And so the net difference is a surplus benefit of $300,000. Leanna and Ellen went through and performed a significant review of the forecast for the rest of the year to understand what the impact would be. Netting the income changes and the expense changes. And equally, uh, whereas we had talked about having maybe some challenges in the budget as a result of the lower income from the tuition changes. The offset from the expense reductions due to the change in the way school is being delivered is offsetting that loss from revenue. So from a financial standpoint, this year, school is in good shape, unfortunately, as a result of the change. It's not something anybody wanted to have happen, but it is certainly resulting in, um, no loss of cost at this point. Completely up in the air how that relates to what happens next year. We've talked about and discussed a lot of the options if they were to continue. We talked about it earlier. What does that mean for space? What does it mean for teacher time? What does it mean for resources to continue and to improve the teaching experience and the student experience? All of that is TBD, uh, and will have certainly potential dramatic, um, impact on the budget and the expenses going forward. So more to be done and everyone is keeping an eye on it as we move forward. But generally speaking, March was a favorable month for the expenses as will be the second half of the year or the rest of the year. Any questions? Roger?
Uh, questions for Kristen?
Um, I have one. I know that one of the things that we've talked about in the past is that we have this fund for teachers to get professional development and that teachers have not really been using that fund, um, at the level that they're entitled to. And, um, it's possible that with these changes in how we teach, that teachers might be looking for professional development in distance teaching and all of these different things. And that that might be, um, something that as a board, we can say, listen, these funds are available. And even if you've used up yours, we can find ways to make this available. Or I'm, I'm not really sure. I'm just saying that it might be something teachers are looking for more PD where that was sort of unexpected. Because normally I would have already put in for all of the classes that I would have wanted to take this year. And now all of a sudden, I'm like, oh, Fred, I really could use something. So it might be a possibility we want to explore.
Um, Jess, there's still plenty of money in that, in that budget. Um, so it would be go through the regular process, just have the teachers, you know, uh, send, send that in. Um, and get it approved by the department chair and send it in through Leanna.
Yeah, but it, it, um, I might have used up all of mine this year, but there, so I know there's enough in the pot for, like in the communal thing. But each individual might have used up their particular total. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, you know, Leanna actually can run those, those, that list and she can figure out who has spent how much. Um, and I know she is on the call here, so, um, I will ask her unofficially, she's muted, to, um, to just run that list and, and see. Um, a lot of the PD, I was looking at it myself today, a lot of the PD is inexpensive right now, um, or, or free. Um, so I would, we can, we can definitely do that. Tell anyone who's interested in PD to, to let us know.
Okay. Yeah, and every, like, even all the summer workshops are now moving to like online things. So even if you do go to them, they're, they're, they're cheaper. So just kind of throwing that out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Every year, you know, it's actually a question since I've been here, uh, that the, that comes up, which is, you know, why aren't we using more of the PD? And I think it's important and everybody on the board wants the teachers to use as much of that PD as possible. So hopefully they can do that more this year. Any other questions on finance?
Thank you, Kristen and, Kristen and Leanna. We had a great meeting this week. We actually met, I believe we met two or three times in finance within the last month.
Yeah, we met twice since the last meeting. Maybe three times now that you mention it.
So we, we are busy. Liz, education, last and definitely not least.
Would you like me to present for you, Liz? You're on mute.
Um, yes, please. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know and reminding me. Um, so yes, so education, the Education Committee did meet in April. Um, unfortunately, we had missed our February and March meetings because of a quorum issue. And then obviously, um, we got cut off just on the day that the school was being cleaned. So, um, we, we decided to scrap our old agenda and take a look at the whole idea of distant learning and seeing, uh, what's going on and sort of get some feedback on lessons learned, best practices, that sort of thing. Um, and so we had a discussion at the initial meeting and, um, got some good ideas. But then decided that obviously the teachers have the most knowledge. So, um, we put together a survey out that went out to the teachers. Um, Ellen and I had discussed it probably two weeks ago just before vacation. And then, um, Mike Finkel and I worked on it and he was able to get it out for us during vacation. So hopefully when the teachers had a little bit of, of downtime from one of their jobs, um, they were able to take a look at it. And we did get some good feedback and we did get some good ideas. So, um, what I did was, um, and actually, Ben, if you don't mind going to the next page. So really where we focused on is sort of what, what are the lessons learned? What were your best practices? What challenges? And what either resources are you using or could you use? Um, so those were sort of the key areas. What I did here was I just bubbled up, um, some of the, the themes that we saw as we went through all of the, um, responses. But what I've also done for you, um, and just so everyone can read through them and we'll go through a bit of it. Um, I have, you know, 13 pages of the direct, um, information that I got from the teachers. And I thought that would be useful for all of you. Um, obviously, I'm going to be sharing this with Ellen so that she and, and the task force and, and department chairs can all use this. Uh, but also I'm going to take it back to the Ed Committee for our, um, for our next meeting. And really start to dig into this and, and see where we might have, you know, whether it's ideas or, you know, ways to, to make sure that people are aware of, of some of the information and, and some of what was shared in this. Um, like, just in terms of lessons learned, um, I heard, I saw a lot in the feedback around flexibility. And I think Ellen certainly alluded to this earlier as well. Just, you know, the students need to be able to get the information a number of different ways. And the teachers need to understand that not everybody is going to be available at, at each time just because of work and family and, you know, emergencies and that sort of thing. And so they, really someone did talk about just the overall importance of, of flexibility. And then also that whole connection and interaction, I think that's another really big one. And, and certainly, you know, one of the things, and I just realized we hadn't put it under this, uh, this slide on best practices. But making sure that you see someone on video, like, you know, and I think Ellen also made the point about how they are checking in with students who might not be in classes. But, but just making sure that, that people do show up on video, even if it's for just two minutes. Um, to just make sure everybody's okay as a way to check in. Um, that seems to be, you know, really something that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, I think that, you know, when we, if we just go back to lessons learned. And, and Jess, I'm sure, you know, you, you have seen this a lot. But really making sure that the students stay engaged during your lessons is a big challenge. Um, and, you know, it's, it's so different than when you're with them in the classroom live. So, you know, that definitely came across as, as being a challenging area. Um, and then, you know, if we look at, at some of the challenges, I think the whole idea around professional development and training definitely comes out. And I think to, to your point, Jess, there's going to be training that a lot of you never thought that you needed or you really never anticipated taking. Um, certainly whether it's Google, the Google suite of tools, or if it's, you know, if there's other tools out there, um, that you end up adopting. But certainly, you know, I think that that's something that, that needs to be thought of. Um, and then again, this is another area that came up in, in challenging, in challenges. Just because typically in a classroom, a teacher can kind of gauge if the students are understanding the materials. Whereas online, it's not as easier and it's really, it takes a lot of one-on-one checking in. Um, that doesn't necessarily happen in the classroom. So just a lot of, um, there was a lot of good feedback and, and we'll, we'll just go through and I've, I've bolded a few, few areas. Um, you know, a few of the feedback comments, so we can go through that. Um, other, the other thing is on resources, and I think that this is probably an area where, um, you know, needs to be looked into. And certainly, you know, decided on what are the best resources to use. Um, because I do think that there's, um, a lot of challenges with the different resources being used, um, for the teachers. And, and they're just not sure which ones they should be using. Or certainly some people are more comfortable with some than others. Um, but one of the, actually, interestingly enough, one of the, um, ones that came up as a need was the online grading as well as textbook availability. And so I think that one of the, the comments was just whether or not there could be, you know, a budget for textbooks being available at home. I'm not sure if that's realistic or if there's an option to have like a PDF version of the textbook that students would be able to utilize in this, you know, in a similar scenario that we're currently in. I don't know. Um, I'm just sort of throwing it out there. So, but those were some of the things that, that certainly we probably need to look at and consider going forward. Ben, do you want to just go to the next page? So as I said, we got really, you know, just some great feedback, um, from the teachers in different areas. Um, and certainly, you know, I think that especially in, in the middle school, just because of the age. But the fact that, you know, the kids are able to see their friends and connect with them. Um, you know, the, the feeling is, is, is having that ability will hopefully make things easier, um, for August. Especially given we don't know how much kids are going to get together and, and be able to see each other over the summer. So obviously, um, that will, will definitely be a challenge. And I had already mentioned the, the whole idea around the, the textbooks. So, um, you know, something, something to consider as, as we go forward. Do you want to just go to the next page, Ben? Um, actually, I thought this, this one here was, was interesting to me and, and, you know, maybe it's something to consider next year. But start the, the setup of remote learning at the beginning of the year. Um, I don't think anyone could have anticipated what has happened, um, this year, but certainly. But certainly given what has happened this year and given, you know, the possibility that, you know, it could be part of next year, it could happen intermittently if we have certain um, illnesses, you know, if the illness pops up again. But it's just, again, another, something to consider for the beginning of the year. And then, um, I'm not sure. I've got something in the way of, uh, the, the deck, but also just around the whole idea of getting to know Google Classroom, um, that's obviously a, a big area. Oh, thank you. Um, and so that was, um, you know, a lesson learned that someone had, had sent in. And one of the reasons why, you know, we wanted to collect these and obviously we want to be able to share them with everybody is there might be things that come up here that are interesting that some teachers might not even know about. And so we definitely want to make sure that, you know, that they have um, this information and they can, you know, go to some of their colleagues if they have more questions. Um, just in, another thing that I, I noticed up above is the whole idea of, um, using Kahoot within, um, I guess the Google Suite. And it's just a way to make sure throughout the lesson that, that the students are getting it. I, I've, I've never seen it, used it, so I can't really speak to it, but it was definitely mentioned as, as a lesson learned in terms of what they're using. Do you want to just go to the next page? Ben?
It's on the next page, right?
Oh, is it? Sorry. Okay. You can go to the next one. I didn't really highlight anything there. Sorry. I'm like, I didn't see it shift. Um, and then, um, you know, I think another thing is that they are also, you know, concerned with, with that connection. I think that that's, that's definitely a big struggle. Um, and especially because different students learn differently. So, um, there, there's definitely concern that this will, will continue to be a struggle while, um, while we're away from, from the actual school and, and really having that, that connection in the classroom. You can go to the next page. Um, so just in terms of best practices and, and one thing I, I do, um, you know, we came up with some best practices and certainly it was more, I guess, from the parent perspective, but I think some of the ones that the teachers came up with were, um, were so useful. Um, one thing that I find very useful, and I think Ellen, you mentioned that, that this was, um, a recommendation from the, um, uh, from Dees, but just having the weeks expectations email go out and having the parents copied on that, I found that to be very helpful. So that I know what is to be expected for the week and, you know, as much as fortunately I don't have to, to micromanage because my student is older, but I think for the parents to just have an understanding of, of what their kids should be doing is, is very helpful. So, um, that definitely to me, from a parent perspective is, is a best practice. Do you want to go to the next page, Ben? Again, we mentioned flexibility, um, and it, you know, be, just because I think that there is so much going on in everybody's lives right now. I can definitely see how, how this is a challenge. Um, one teacher did mention having the quiz do every Friday. Um, and again, it's more for participation and checking in and making sure that they're staying engaged. Um, and also the teachers are able to follow up with the students who don't um, get things in and it looks like most people are sta, are, are able to stay engaged. So that's, that's great. Do you want to go to the next page? Uh, so this one, um, I thought was very, it's, it, obviously there's a lot of information here, but I thought it was very, um, interesting and well-written in terms of all of the different things to think about. So I would say that, you know, just read through these. Um, I don't want to read through it all right now, but I did think that it was very interesting. You know, we did get some, just some great feedback. Um, while, while people had some downtime, so it was very helpful. Do you want to go to the next page? Um, so again, I think we mentioned this, but just have, you know, multiple medias of delivery. Um, just because people are working at different times. Um, and it was interesting. They, they talked about, you know, assuming that they're not going to read the directions and making sure that the instructions are within the questions as well. Um, I think that-
The reading directions is so bad.
So, so maybe that's a lesson, a lesson to kick off the next year or something. But, oh, that's funny. That's funny. Um, so that, so that's a true one, I guess. Um, all right. So do you want to go to the next one, Ben? Um, let's see, this again, another just, and this I think is great for all of us to have a routine and to, to make sure that, you know, we know what the expectations are. Um, I thought, again, this was another one that, that was very well-written and, um, I, I love the last line about how can we take this awful experience and perhaps glean the positives and what, what will we really need to keep in mind? What do we want to remember about this whole experience 10 years from now? I just thought that was, um, very poignant because I do think that, um, hopefully we are going to sort of change the way that we operate as a result of this and hopefully it will have some positive outcomes. I think that that's all we can, we can actually hope for on that one. Um, we can go to the next one, Ben. The challenges, obviously, you know, there are just a number of different challenges that, that we're finding and this is an area where I would really love for, you know, for some people to dig into. If you do see the challenges and think of anything, um, I'd love to get feedback because I'd love to be able to pass it along. Um, I just, you know, I, I don't know that we're ever going to be able to fix every problem, but if we can make things a little easier, um, or more manageable, I'd, I'd love to be able to, to help with that. Um, and you know what is, I think that last one about really the soullessness of the remote learning. I, I'm sure a lot of teachers are feeling that way. I can't even imagine what it's like, you know, sitting in front of a screen and it's certainly not the, the way that AMS operates and it's, it's not the way our teachers are. So I just can't even imagine how hard it is with everything else that I'm sure is going on in their lives. So I, I, I completely felt for that one. Can you go to the next one, Ben? Thanks. Um, you can just keep going. I don't think there was anything huge on that one. We can go to the, the next, if you can just go down to resources. So again, we talked about Google Classroom, the whole Google Suite, um, business Zoom, which I do think there were some issues with, um, uh, security, but apparently that is starting to get better. Um, the thought was that maybe it, it does function better than Hangouts. I'm not really sure, but that was something. Ah, thank you, Ellen. Yes, it's very expensive. So again, that would be something for the board to consider. Um, having, having the business Zoom. Uh, another thing was the online grading, if there is, um, anything there. Um, touchscreens were something that were mentioned, um, that would be very easy, you know, much more helpful for, for presenting. Um, and then just, I know we've actually been talking about the, the communication between Google and Plus Portals. I don't know that it exists because they're two separate, um, two separate systems. So it, it, you know, it's something that we would love to see, but I don't know that it, it really can happen. Um, and if you want to just go, I think the, is that the last page? Okay. That's, uh, the last one again is really just around, um, uh, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the, uh, the chat going on and I didn't realize it wasn't me. Um, you know, just in terms of having one common online tool. I, you know, I think the problem is, is people like, you know, you know, gravitate towards different things. So I think as much as it would be great to have one tool that everybody gets trained on, at the end of the day, there are going to be certain, you know, certain tools that people like to use. So I, I think that having a, a common tool, but then the flexibility to use other things as well, um, I think it has to be a balance of the two. So, so as I said, we're going to, um, share this with the ed committee. Um, I'll be sending this over to Ellen. Um, actually I think you should already have a copy, but I'll just make sure. And then, um, any feedback that I get from the ed committee, uh, I will definitely share back, um, with Ellen and Mike and team. So that, you know, they just have that information and certainly if there are other things that the teachers, you know, think about and want to share, we would love to have the input. So. So that is it on the remote learning.
Yeah, Liz, one quick comment. If, if there's one uh, survey answer or comment that I'm not really sure if I'm going to miss or not, if we don't run the survey, is all the comments about Plus Portals versus Google Classroom and the lack of consistency. So I think this is a huge social experiment on what is AMS' approach to, uh, using those tools consistently. And, and I hope we come out of this better at that consistency. And, and I don't, I don't mean to impose any, any, uh, opinion on what's better and what should be used and what should not be used. But hopefully this will get us better, at, at least the families will feel better about, uh, communicating with the teachers in a consistent way as far as grades, assignments and all that kind of stuff.
So Google Classroom is a way that they're delivering their classes. Um, and, and giving out assignments and communicating with kids, they can do that. The Plus Portal is actually where they put in the grades. Um, and so the parents can see what the assignment was and what the grade was. Um, and Plus Portal takes those grades and converts it into like their transcripts and report cards and things like that. The, the, one of the problems that we have is now many, many of the teachers are using Google Classroom. Teachers who have never used it in their careers are now using Google Classroom. Many of them had mastered most, if all, not all of the ones that had been using the two systems, had gotten pretty much in the, in the habit of updating Plus Portals. What we, what we were talking, Mike and Brianna and I were talking today is that now we have a whole new group of, of folks who are using Google Classroom who never have before, and it's really not on their radar that they've got to talk between the two systems because they've never had to do it before. They've only ever used Plus Portals to, to put up, um, you know, assignments and things like that. Um, and so we, we, we are going to communicate, it's on our list for the department chairs on Monday, just to remind the folks that may be brand new to Google Classroom, that they need to also make sure that they're, they're posting assignments and grades in Plus Portal. So a couple, yeah, that was just something that kind of came up, uh, today.
Um, Ellen, if I, the way we're set up right now, there's no way for a teacher to use either one exclusively. You almost have to be using both at this point. They don't talk to each other all that well. One is good for something, one is good for another. They both let you email parents and students. So like sort of what you use for one and not the other. It's really difficult to, um, to, to figure out the best sort of combination and Plus Portals is not user-friendly for either parents, students or teachers. Google Classroom is much better about that. But we can't use exclusively Google Classroom because that's, it doesn't do our grade books and our reporting and, 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 and parents aren't as keyed into it yet because it's newer. It's, it's a, it's a really difficult, uh, practical problem to solve.
Um, yeah. Can I add something over here? Sure. The Google Classroom was, uh, on its own before. Right now Radicar is also very, very clearly working with Google Classroom. They are getting that. There is a special grade book for Google Classroom that can be automatically gotten, uh, uh, like imported into Plus Portals right now. Um, the teachers, we, it, there are, there is a cer, a certain level of PD that the teachers would need right now to make sure that there is a smooth transition, but it is confusing to say the least at this point, um, because they are two separate tools. But the integration, it can happen. And then again, um, like we talked before, consistency is the key. We pick one and stick with that. Work through it, iron out the details and the kinks that we need to work with. It is a lot more consistent than we can think about. Like, you know, the more I tend to use, I look into, I looked into Canvas, I looked into other tools too. The more I look into other tools, I'm a strong proponent of sticking with Google Classroom and work with it.
Yeah, Google Classroom, I think is adding things, it being very, very responsive to feedback. Padmaja, that connection between Plus Portal and Google Classroom is brand new, right? We haven't really integrated-
Probably around four, five months now. Yes.
Yeah.
About four, five months.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm not familiar with the connection there.
Yeah, I, I would also say that, uh, requesting things like this is good. Also, there's so many add-ons to Google Classroom that nobody's using, you know, like there, there's more to it than just, you know, what was, how to use the basics is one thing, but if you get proficient in it, like there is a lot of extra really cool things that are free to the school that, you know, that you can do, uh, sharing and stuff like that. Um, so yeah, I, I would say I agree, there's not a lot of great options out of there that are fully integrated all in one platform, but, um, you, maybe you just go a little deeper and maybe do some more training. I think that'll be a lot, a lot of, it would go long ways with your team.
The only good thing that comes out of this is that we can, um, use only Google Classroom and make it really seamless and dump that Plus Portals nonsense and that everybody can all be-
Tell us how you really feel, Jess.
Yeah, exactly, Jess.
Don't sugarcoat it. Come on, let's go.
I'm sorry to burst your bubble, but the SIS system, we don't have everything. We have to keep Radicar. I have worked with scheduling before. Sorry, Jess. But like, you know, there are ways to work with it. Right now we have to figure that way.
Figure that one out. Yeah, it's scheduling, it's also state reporting. You have to have one of the SIS systems that will accept the state reporting for Sims and Reddicker is that.
Got it. All right. Good to know. Well, I'll send this over and as I said, we're going to discuss it at, at the upcoming, um, education committee. So if we, if we have any, any other feedback or you know, if we can start helping with, with solutions or ideas or anything, um, we'll certainly pass that along.
Other questions for Liz? Great. Well, thank you very much, Liz. That's a fantastic and detailed report. Um, all, I appreciate all the effort it took to put that together.
Okay.
All right. Um, done with committee reports. Uh, meeting wrap up. I'd like to throw, open the discussion or feel free to text. Um, you know, challenges or, or problems we faced today? And what, what new best practices do we want to put in place? What should we do different for next meeting?
I, I think the chat function provides a good way to do a time check. It's less intrusive than interrupting the speaker. Do a good job with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. That was actually the first time I ever even saw it, so.
Yeah, I think we could even leverage a chat for simple questions as well. I saw that, uh, was especially during Ellen's presentation that instead of interrupting the speaker, uh, to use, we can try to use chat more.
Um, one quick thing, because you're recording, all the chat messages will also be recorded, just, just so that you know.
Yeah. I, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this. Is there a way to do polls in, uh, Hangouts? And, and I don't know if this would qualify for the rule call requirement, but, um,
No.
I, I feel, I, I guess we didn't have a lot of votes, but it-
Yeah, we got, we gotta do that. The roll call has to be-
Verbal.
It has to be verbal.
All right, never mind.
Good try. All right. So I think we put the action to try, we're going to use, use chat more for questions and for timekeeping and continue onward. If you have other feedback, send it my way. We'll, we'll roll it up into the meeting. Um, agenda, uh, addition of agenda items for next meeting. I just put in the agenda, the standard stuff, standard content from the bot calendar. We, I have survey results, but that's probably not, given that we're just starting the survey, I don't think we'll be having survey results for May. That'll likely be June. Uh, budget approval, that's a maybe. Yeah, I think we're, we'll at least have a- Yeah, I think we're, we'll at least have a budget presentation in the May meeting. Governance is going to do the bot self-assessment. Board members, please commit, complete the assessment by May 15th. And also that the committees should start working on drafting SMART goals. Again, I don't know whether, it may be, I think it's aggressive to be asking for SMART goals in the May meeting. I think I will push that to June. But encourage committees to start discussion on their SMART goals for next school year. Is there other things that are non-standard?
Hey, Roger, quick question. If we just set our SMART goals for in January, I think that's when I sent them over to Jill. Do we need to do another set for the Ed Committee or is that sufficient?
I think you should just reassess them. We're, we're going to align the SMART goals to the school year. So if you think that, I would just reassess them and align them up for the 2021 school year.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Not the way I wanted it answered, but okay.
Well, I think you're ahead of, you're ahead of most of us on the SMART goals. All right, other-
Did you mention the bylaws and policies for next?
I did not. She's in bylaws. Got it now. All right. Other, other agenda items for, for next, for the May meeting. Sarah, could you do a summary of the action items, please? Unmute?
I don't have them in front of me, but I can find them.
I know I got two is to work in the communications with parents and send to the survey task force and start the process with a teacher survey. And I also, Jill sent out the board self-assessment link, right?
Well, from the last meeting, action items, we just, all I have written down here is budget discussion in April. Check in on goals and investment policy.
I was referring, sorry, I was referring to action items that we acquired this meeting, not roles identified.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me jump back here. Where, okay, I do have a list of those. Yay, okay. All right. Yeah, I hear that. Sorry. I have several of them, actually. Okay. So. Action, action. Where are you? I have, Raul has an action. He said draft letter to parents that they're going to skip the survey. I will put together a packet for Samini. Jill will send an email out about the self-assessment that'll be due by May 15th. The vision task force, Roger, you're going to take that with the edits. And I think that's it.
I believe so. Anybody have additions to that? All right. Any last items for discussion before we take a motion to go to, go to executive session? I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss purchase lease facilities, legal strategy and, and strategy for negotiation with representative personnel. We're going to be inviting Ellen and Liana to the executive session.
And Mike, Roger.
And Mike.
Thank you.
So did I have a second, please?
My second. Cindy.
So I, I made the motion Cindy's second. I'm going to make this a combined motion to both adjourn and go into executive session. We'll start executive session, five minutes, we'll call it at 9:05. And people who, people should have a separate invite for that. If not, text me. So I need a- Got it.
All right, hi, everyone.
No, no, I need a roll call. I need to do a roll call. Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm doing a roll call. Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. So, meeting is adjourned at 8:59 PM. We open executive session at 9:05 PM on a separate link. And take, and take a five-minute stretch break and I will see you then.